First up, we have discussions from the Director of Public Service and Engineering.
Good evening, everyone. I have a couple items for you this evening. Our first two items are our standard quarterly supplementals for damage to city property. We've received funds as repayment for damage to city property, so we're respectfully requesting a transfer back to their expense accounts.
Okay. I asked about, I sent it, I think I forwarded it to you, but I asked like what it was for, and there was for streetlight knockdowns, fire hydrant hits, and a couple of street signs that were hit. Most of them, and all were involved vehicles. So I just, I would like to, I mean, when we have that come up, I'd like to know what we're getting the money for. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions about this one? All right, okay. So this will be on for first reading and then no need to come back consent. Is that correct?
Sounds good.
So 0622020 will be on the next agenda for first reading and then no need to come back to committee. Okay, next, 0632020.
That is the other quarterly supplemental. This one is for water meter purchases or fees. This is generally from new construction builds to where they need to purchase a water meter. So we're respectfully requesting an ordinance to transfer that back to the expense account as well.
Any questions on this one?
No question.
Were any of these deduct meters, do you know? There's been a lot of discussion about with the hot weather and a lot of people watering. Do you know if there were any of these were deduct meters?
I'm not 100% sure. I would assume some are, yes.
Okay. All right. So this one also will be on for first reading at the next meeting, and then no need to come back to committee. Okay, next, next one, 0642020.
Yeah, our final item tonight is our yearly contract with the City of Columbus. Each year, we enter in a contract with City of Columbus to plow approximately 10.23 lane miles of Columbus streets, and they provide compensation for that at $760 per lane mile. So we're respectfully requesting ordinance to enter into agreement with City of Columbus again.
Any questions?
No, ma'am. Consent's fine.
I'm going to consent.
Yeah.
All right. So this will be on for first reading, 0582020 will be on for first reading, no, no, 0642020 will be on for first reading, no need to come back to committee. Consent agenda. Okay, next ordinance, 0582020. That's on our agenda. Do you have that, Grant? It's about the parking electric vehicle charging stations.
You had a first reading on this, and Rick wanted it back to committee.
Okay. Do we have questions about that? The only question I had was, I was reading it.
Nancy?
Yes?
On Exhibit B, Section C, the, one of the items that we're talking about was looking for clarification. Section C, the Director of Public Service and Engineering shall set the rates for use of the electric vehicle charging station. Said rates are subject to change from time to time, the electric rates, et cetera. One of the items that were discussed with a part of that was with regard to whether that rate structure would fall under council's approval as any other fee typically does, and whether it would be included in our fee table as opposed to specifically a line item in the legislation. That was one of the items that we were talking about.
Chairwoman McGregor?
Yes.
Related to that as well, I had requested language that would clarify that this was, I guess I expressed my preference, although there wasn't consensus on this point, that this would be intended to keep it as close to cost as possible. As I recall, that's why, it's part of why Exhibit B, 949.01 is back to us.
Right, okay.
And I guess, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Just to that point, I would say that I think to Grant and to the mayor, I think the language in subsection C, second sentence, I think satisfies my concerns.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Which section are we talking in?
The same, same, Exhibit B, Chapter 949.01. It's in Section C as well. Your concerns are with regard to who is determining the rates. My concern with, was with what's the policy behind setting the rates?
In the past, if I may, in the past, parks folks or service folks have come and said, here's the rates we'd like to charge for these services, and council approves those rates, I think to Mr. Lerrick's point. So in Item C, that the Director of Public Service and Engineering shall set the rates, I think, you know, again, it's, you can make a recommendation to us, but it's up to us to set those rates.
So if I could just ask a question and just see a concern. So we're talking about rates that are based on electricity, which are extremely volatile. So they're always going to be changing. So I can envision a situation where we have to come back to council. If council was setting a rate, or a rate goes in a fee table, where we're going to have to come back multiple times during the year to adjust rates based on whatever the outgoing electric fee is.
The water rate changes also. I would anticipate that you set it once for a year and make sure you can cover your costs. And if you made too much money, then we'd adjust it down, just like we do with the proprietary funds. Set it high enough that you cover your costs, and if it needs to be adjusted down later, then you adjust it down. But again, you know, I don't think you're going to charge somebody 37 cents an hour, or whatever, you know, to cover these things. It's going to be a buck an hour, or five bucks an hour, something nice round number. Again, for how long they stay, you know, again, Stephen, you probably have more experience with any of these than, I know a lot of the places aren't paid, but they're tracking. Would you like to add in into something? Again, I know Mr. Schnitzer's position is that we want to cover our costs, but I see your point that we don't want to change them on a monthly basis.
The only thing that I would add is, is that the, I mean, the mayor and I have had conversations about this, and they've been doing, she and her staff have been doing extensive research and come to the same conclusion that in central Ohio, the rates are actually setting around plus or minus a value, and that's largely driven by contracts by vendors such as Greenlots. I don't know what the intention is of the city to actually have a vendor run these types of things, but if there's concern about, you know, the value of whatever the charging is, is that, you know, that would be coming in a future contract, if that's something that we're going to do. I don't know. I guess I'm not making a whole bunch of sense or rallying a cry one way or another, but it's clear that there is for-profit-making, to some degree, on charging. And the metering is based also on making sure that there isn't hogging of electric power, like people not parking their car overnight, or, you know, unwheeling a number of hours. But I think our, that proposed ordinance actually even addresses that. I think I saw somewhere in there three hours. Yeah, I really feel that the administration is actually going down the right path in lockstep with what's happening in central Ohio. The question about council weighing in on this, it's like, yeah, okay, maybe, you know, once a year, but I don't know. I would be more open to actually giving the administration more latitude to go with what's happening in the central Ohio marketplace. And if that's a report to council or not, I.
May I make a comment?
Yes, yes.
Grant might be able to shed some light on this. Grant, if I remember correctly, there was a, that the vendor was supposed to work with us on setting these rates, and we would have like a lot more information to bring back to council. That's where we kind of stumbled. We needed to get this passed to get to Phase 2, where the vendor then says, okay, here's how we usually calculate these things. Then we can present that to you to show how it's done.
So.
Would that be Greenlots?
Cut that.
Sorry. There's a few people breaking up.
Yeah.
The agreement with Greenlots would allow them, or once that agreement is signed, they would assist us with setting rates. The challenge that we're going to have starting out is we don't really know what to expect. We're not sure how many vehicles are going to park there, how long they're going to park there. So it's going to be a bit of a challenging start to figure out what that exact rate is, and whether or not it's the correct rate. We may go high on accident, we may go low on accident. We just really don't know what the desire, the need is going to be in those areas, starting out. But yes, the vendor will help us through that. They'll show us what the, what other areas have done, so that we are competitive, while also trying to make this as cost neutral as possible.
I believe you have that in your, actually, thing that you sent us. That's exactly what you have written.
Not looking for a price. That's not the point of the discussion, at least not from my perspective. I can't think of any service that the community, that the city provides that has a fee associated with it, that council doesn't simply approve the fund, the pricing structure. There may be, and correct me if that is the case. Offhand, I can't think of anything. That's the only thing I'm asking, is the validation of whether this code sits along that same structure. And that's really it. We do get recommendations and requests from service, from parks, from any of our public-facing entities with regard to fees that we charge for everything from obviously the water bill down to pool membership, golf course membership, et cetera. I think this falls underneath that same category. I'm just looking for the norm in our structure, that's all. If this falls something different, I just need to be educated.
May I make a suggestion? In light of trying to see where you're going, I'm trying to think of some wording in my head. If we say something as set by the Director of Service, overseen by council, as approved by council, I mean, I'm trying to avoid the terms as approved by council, so it doesn't have to be approved every time it's changed. But I'm trying to put the power back in council's hands. That's what I'm trying to come up with.
Understand. Two things. I would in no way expect the pricing of this to be so tight that we have to monitor electricity costs on a daily basis to figure out if it's even. You take a broad swath, you get it within 70%, bump it up a small amount, whatever. The idea is to not overcharge anybody. Just determine a reasonable market rate that makes sense to cover some short costs, and if it's a little positive, it's a little positive. Just like pretty much any other fee that we charge on anything else. I suspect, actually, I know I just don't have the language in front of me, that any other item that has a fee structure associated with it has the reference, in whatever fashion it is, that drives it to council having the fee structure put in front of us on an annual basis. So it's just checking for that language and dropping it in.
I'm writing that down, and I will have that information to you guys.
Mrs. McGregor, can I opine on this?
Yes, you may. I didn't see you, Michael. Sure, go ahead.
Thanks. Thanks, everyone. This is Mike. Hope you can hear me okay. I'm doing a little bit different setup here with the earbuds. But I guess I'll just kind of add on to what Councilman Lerrick was just talking about. I think the language that we're looking for is perhaps adopted by council. I mean, I know that when we do like the park impact fees, and there's various tables that, if I'm not mistaken, are adopted when they're changed, whether that occurs on an annual basis or every couple of years. That answer eludes me at this time, but I think that similar format slash structure would be appropriate here. And then another thing that I find curious is on Exhibit B, subsection C. It seems to me that this is perhaps rather superfluous, if we go down that path, where it says at some future date, the Director of Public Service and Engineering may determine that use of electric vehicle charging stations will be free of charge. That again, just seems kind of an unnecessary statement, if we're going to in fact have a fee schedule. If the, if the fee is in fact zero, it will just simply come back, and council will sign off on that.
I agree. I think that specifically was requested previously, and we tried to squeeze that in there, but I do agree with what you're saying.
I would agree that that's unnecessary to have that in there. Any other comments?
So can we summarize where we are?
Is there a way to, I think that what you're saying is right. Is there a way to, if it would like to take a huge jump, like a certain increase that would, I mean, I guess it could always come back to council if there was like a huge increase or a huge decrease, one way or the other. We could, I don't anticipate that, but I mean, that's.
We said sewer fees all the time, and the city comes back and says, here's your new rate, and we adjust rates if we need to.
Okay.
You know, I don't want, I don't want to set up an electric charging station proprietary fund, per se. You know, like we have a sewer, water, and storm fund, but it's the same, same principle. We put enough money into it that we can operate out of that. If one of them gets damaged, we can pay for it, those kind of things. You're working a little bit of, you know, a little bit of overhead maintenance, everything else in these things. You know, we're getting them for free, but nothing's free after they're installed. There's always, you know, operations, maintenance, updates to software, and everything else. So all of those things. If we made a little bit of money in the first year, and we banked some of it to take care of the things in year 2, 3, 4, whatever it takes, I mean, it's in line with what we do with all of our other funds like that. So that would be my, you know, again, I'm not, I'm not looking to make a lot of money and balance the budget with it, but.
What?
But, you know.
Mr. Rutter?
Yeah, so, but back to the point that Lerrick is actually, I understand, and I think where I'm getting confused, my read of 941, 949.01B. So the City of Gahan is never going to be operating these charging stations as the city. We're always going to have a contracted vendor, and that's what B says. The contracted operator will actually be the one who recommends the rates, and that contract would have to actually come before council. And we, you know, if the rates are not something satisfactory, then, you know, we would have that discussion. But I don't ever, and Mayor, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't see us ever operating as a utility on these charging stations. Is that correct?
That would be correct.
So we're always going to have a contract, we're always going to have a vendor that's going to be setting the rates through the contract.
We probably just need to, I understand where you're going. I think that makes sense, Stephen. Does that simply mean that Section B can be a, it's not relevant? Because it would actually be tied to the structure of the contract anyway?
I'm sorry, you fade out.
I saw Grant shaking his head there. I think he might fundamentally disagree with that statement.
Oh, I was like, go ahead, Grant.
Sorry, if I may. There is not going to be a contract coming forward that will have the rates in it. The contract that has already been brought forward is just stating that this company is the management company, or has the management software to allow us to set the rates through them. But there wouldn't be something coming back saying, this is what they're going to be charging in that contract. So we have complete control over what they charge, but they're going to assist us in completing that.
So it's a, for you, we just determine what that fee is. Does that make sense?
Yes. Yeah, we determine the fee with their assistance, and then we go from there.
So, so am I hearing all of, that you would like in 949.01C? The Director of Public Service and Engineering shall set the rates for use of the electrical vehicle charging stations as adopted by council at that point?
I would, with the simplest thing would be to reference some of our other items where council approves fees, and just mimic that language where it's appropriate or how it's appropriate. Something, and that's probably something similar to what you just stated. I just not seeing the code in front of me. I just can't remember it all, so.
Okay. So do we want this to come back then, next committee? I think it should come back.
We plan on changing it, so.
All right, so we'll.
Let's hand up.
Never mind.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. Okay, so we'll make the changes.
I'm dancing.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes.
I'm looking, I'm, I'm, thank you. I'm sorry. I like this, this is. Electric vehicles charging station code change, but it says here on that one that we had, that Chapter 949.01 authorizes the city to implement a fee for usage of the EV charging stations and authorizes the Director of Public Service and Engineering to set appropriate fees. That's what it says here.
Yes.
It appears that that's not correct.
Right. That's what we've been discussing.
Right.
Yeah, I know, but, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I mean, I just saw this here. I apologize. Because I thought, I think we all on the right, are all on the same page, but will that, that act, item number two, change?
Where I think we are is asking that the language be updated to structures similar to.
I got you.
The other languages that we have in place today. And then eliminate the extra sentence or half-sentence of Section 941.01C.
I just, I'm not sure that we, my thinking on that third sentence of C is that it could be retained, and it may be, instead of May, it, right after May, it could say with approval, with approval by council. But I actually think that there's a value to that third sentence. So that's, that's just so you guys hear it from me.
That's why it's in there. Someone had specifically asked us to put that in there. It might have been Marissa, I don't know, but that's why we put it in there.
Yeah, I didn't ask for the specific sentence, but I did want to make sure that we were clear about what our policy goals were.
Well, can we, can we discuss those policy goals? I apologize. This is Mike. I wasn't able to make the committee meeting last week where this might have come up.
Yes. We discussed that, from my perspective, and I don't, I think that there was some disagreement potentially. But we talked about this several months ago, actually, as well, and when we were actually all back in council pre-COVID, or in chambers. And my thinking on this is that, maybe it's, you know, it's not appropriate necessarily for these to be completely free of charge, but it is appropriate that we make sure that we're recouping our costs. We're not here to gouge anybody or to make, you know, significant profit, but we do want to cover our, you know, cover our margins. I believe that is the intent of this administration. I have full confidence that that is, you know, what Mr. Crawford and Mayor Jadwin want to do with this. My concern is drafting legislation that survives multiple administrations, potentially. So I want to make sure that however it's, who is Vice City Attorney, that there is something to that effect, that we are, we are seeking to cap the cost that we're passing on to our constituents at what we need to operate the meters.
The problem with putting policy within the statute itself is that if the council changes, their policy may change. And they can always change the statute. And so that, and that's why we struggled with that last sentence, because it's really difficult when you try to put the actual, what the policy is behind the statute within the statute itself. Usually that's in the notes, the, at the end, well, in the ORC, at least, that's where.
Yeah.
Stuff, yeah, yeah. We don't really have that, but.
I, I think.
There's a couple, Nancy, if I may, just before we get too far ahead of ourselves. The connection here seems to be really choppy, at least it is on my end, so maybe I'm missing something. We're talking about a third sentence. Is this specifically Exhibit B, subsection C, that we're referring to?
Yes.
Okay, so this is where we talk about that it may be free of charge at some point in time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I guess to clarify, is the policy goal that's being put forth, that these will at some point in time be free? That that's what's being strived for, or toward?
That was not my intention ever. So I think that that, I mean, that was, I mean, I always think it should be that, you know, it should be, we should recoup our costs for the electricity and the maintenance of the, of the charging stations. So to me, that's a, I mean, an unnecessary statement. From my perspective, that's my perspective.
Then maybe the question's better asked towards Councilwoman Bowers and Ray, who I think is maybe trying to craft this to reflect those desires. Again, I'm just coming at this from the standpoint of it's a little choppy here, trying to hear everybody, and then also I'm coming in at, I guess, an informational disadvantage, not being at the prior meeting. So forgive me here.
Yeah, I did not propose, I have not proposed that this be free, which is why I clarified that I did not. I personally did not ask for that sentence. I didn't think that, though, from a, I don't know. So I guess from a contract-writing perspective, you know, authorizing a party to, a bit, to do that in the future, it doesn't seem redundant to me. Now, is it a personal policy, policy goal of mine? No. I'm with Nancy on this.
I'm not sure what we're discussing, though.
Oh, I think we're, what's been put forward has been that, I mean, I guess I've made the statement earlier that I think the third sentence in Exhibit B, subsection C, is essentially superfluous. It doesn't need to be there. That if at some point, if at some point in time the fee schedule is zero, just make it zero. That there doesn't need to necessarily be referenced to, again, quote, "At some point in time, the Director of Public Service can determine that the use of electric vehicle charging stations will be free of charge," end quote. If what I'm hearing.
Can I?
It's superfluous for a couple of reasons. One, I'm hearing thus far that at a minimum, everybody wants to cover the cost. Two, it's superfluous from the standpoint of, again, functionally, if that is the wish of some future council, you know, 20 years down the road, so to speak, that it just is zero. And that for the sake of tight, concise legislation, that it should be struck in from this draft.
I, I can't speak to this from, you know, advising us as a body what to do. What I can share with you is that from my experience in my day job, that there are some areas of law where that if you don't call out that something could be zero, then it, it cannot be. So I guess, like, by way of example, if, if you don't give the court jurisdiction to terminate spousal support, but you give the court jurisdiction to modify spousal support, then the court can, has, some courts have held that they can modify spousal support down to like $1 a month, but they can't terminate it. So I guess from just a purely legal perspective, I don't see it as legally superfluous, but I'm not, I'm certainly not advising this body, and it's just, just my, my work experience. That I don't really disagree.
I would seriously. Maintenance will never be zero, so we're always going to have some cost. This thing is never going to go down to zero.
Yeah, right, yes.
I want to bring up what I was bringing up before, that I, perhaps I missed something. It says here again, and it says in the other things that we have looked at, it says, "The Director of Public Service and Engineering may, at some future date, determine the use of the electric." We're the ones that are setting the fees. So it should not say that the Public Service and Engineering are going to set the fees. It's that, isn't that what we're trying to say? We want to set the fees, like we.
And I think, I think we amended that to say, "Subject to approval by council."
Yeah, I think, I think we've gotten good clarity on that piece, Karen.
There was no, there was no, nothing on here that said that.
Right. That's the piece that needs to be corrected. I think that's pretty clear amongst, I think that's pretty clear amongst everyone.
Okay.
The piece that we're discussing. No, that's why, I think that's the fundamental reason it needs to come back. We've, what we've been. it needs to come back. We've, what we've been discussing for some lengthy period of time is the sentence in section C with regard to a zero charge.
I, I can't imagine there's ever going to be a zero charge. Electricity is always going to have a price, and it's always going to cost to maintain it, so.
We don't have that statement in a pool fee and a park fee and a rental fee and a in any fee that we have anywhere.
Um. Nancy, can I speak?
Yes, sir.
Sorry. I've been reading this over and over and over. It does the language. So I don't care about that last sentence on on Part C. I agree. But as it is, as the draft proposal is written, if a group of businesses like the Creekside Area District wanted to say, hey, you know what, we want to subsidize the cost, and this, this does happen in central Ohio. There are businesses that are subsidizing the the charging point and therefore making it free. As written, can a group of businesses subsidize and therefore the the rate would be free?
I would think that'd have to be a different proposal that they would do that. Somehow that would have to be written differently.
I understand that. And that's, but I'm talking about legislate, I mean, this ordinance. Does this ordinance give the freedom for that to happen?
I don't think the rate is free. The rate still is there. It's just paid by someone else other than the person who's has the car. You're still going to have to charge.
I agree. And but that's, so I'm just asking for legal help on reading this thing. Does it give us the ability to do that if it should ever happen?
I think Paragraph B might be a problem for that, Stephen.
I wondered about that.
To have a credit card.
Well, I don't think you can make a, an ordinance for, to, will cover every possibility in the future. So, I mean, if this is, it could always be altered or amended based on another proposal by businesses if they wanted to do that, so.
I, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Stephen, to your point, so technically, I would agree, because there's that statement at the point of use, that would clearly mean that a fee would be charged and billed at that moment in time. I think to your question, and I think it's a good question with regard to a sponsorship, so to speak, or a sponsorship, I'll just use that for the terminology for the moment. If somebody should should entertain that, and we should be able to get somebody that's willing to do that, we could either spend some time readjusting the language today to accommodate that, or would certainly be open to correcting or adjusting this language to it to resolve for that for that opportunity.
I have a suggestion. We could add in there, or other means. And the other means would encompass that. And again, that's rough language, but you know, something along those lines.
So so it sounds, at the moment, and now all I'm doing, trying to summarize, have clear what may come back, is an adjustment to Section B to what you just stated, Ray, the adjustment to Section C, and then whatever the language correction or adjustment would be to put this as a council decision with regard to our fee tables that we would normally have to approve.
That is the three things I have. Yes.
That sounds good. Anybody have any more to add?
No.
And thank you, guys. We're trying to draw this from scratch. I'm trying to appease seven people and, you know, trying, not appease, but, you know, try to incorporate everyone's ideas. So I appreciate these thoughts.
Okay, thanks, Ray. So do you have what you need from us, you think?
I think so.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so we will move on. That will come back to committee next, committee meeting. Next, items from the Director of Finance.
Good evening. Have a couple of update items for you. I'm only really going to talk about the capital needs assessment in lieu of time. So we're not going to do a deep dive into it. It's just a deliverable for you all to look at, go back and analyze, and come back with questions. Just a couple reminders. It's not a request for funding. It's just an inventory of identified capital maintenance and improvements foreseeable over the next five years. Items that are no longer relevant or that have been funded in the past are removed. Others that were not funded kind of roll forward. And then we have new projects. The new projects are listed on Page Three. And then each project is also prioritized. And on Page Two, as you're looking through them, it defines what those priorities are. As we work to the appropriations, what the administration will do, well, they'll use this listing to come up with recommendations to provide to council as part of that appropriation request as far as what should be funded. The rationale is to fund the SOM or capital maintenance first, and then look at those prioritized items, looking at Priority One, and then working our way down, depending on what funding will allow. If possible, if you could send questions, concerns, comments through the Finance Chair and the Mayor, that way, when we come up to the next committee, it'll be a standing discussion item throughout the budget cycle, as far as any projects that you want further information on, or if there's something in there that you would really like to see pursued, if the funding is available. So that's basically it for the capital needs assessment.
Okay. Any questions? Comments?
No.
Okay.
Well, Nancy, this is Mike. I'm wondering if I can just add something to that real quick. So so this document is now obviously out there, you know, it's posted to our agenda. It has years and dollar amounts associated with it. And while, you know, those of us on council that are familiar with working with this, you know, we understand how to kind of view this. I guess the question that I have, and maybe it's a rhetorical one at this point for the administration, is, is there a plan or a method by which the, this is going to be communicated with the public? I think if this were to drop in somebody's lap without any context, they're going to see this, and they're going to think that, you know, we are spending, you know, $26 million next year in capital improvements. And I think we all know with the budget scenario, that's probably not likely.
Right.
Or I should say, the fiscal backdrop, that's probably not likely. So I guess, I don't need an answer right now, but it's just a sort of a suggestion that maybe before this thing maintains or gets a life of its own, that there would be some sort of messaging here about how exactly it is intended to be used.
That is in the introduction section. And I, if you look at the introduction section, if you're feeling like maybe it doesn't explain it well enough, we could obviously look at some additional language that makes it clear. But I believe the introduction does address your concerns. It is always posted to the website under the Budget Process. Has not come up as an issue before. But if you do feel that the language is lacking in the introduction, we could, we could absolutely look at that.
And I'll add, Councilwoman Snitzer, I think that's a great point. A lot of people don't understand necessarily what these portray, and will look at it and think that, oh, my gosh, that means we're doing all these things. So I, you know, when we do post it to the website, I think a kind of a very, much more direct, perhaps, summary of what exactly this is and how it works would probably be helpful to our residents so that we can be informing them and educating them on what this is and how council uses that document and how the administration uses the document. So I appreciate the suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Take it, Joanne.
Any other questions on that or comments?
No, ma'am.
I have a, Chairwoman. Thank you. Not related to the capital needs assessment, but back to the CARES Act Fund.
We're going to talk about that with the ordinance. So as soon as we're done talking about capital needs, I'll go over the ordinance and the actual action that I need.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Okay.
Is, just to make sure I'm reading this correctly, the cap number for 2021 at this moment is roughly, no, that's not right. Wait a minute. It is 25. All right, never mind. I need to spend more time. No, no point in me asking a question right now.
Okay. All right. Shall we go on to the ordinance in 0652020?
Okay. So there are three funds that I'm requesting an adjustment to the supplemental or requesting supplemental appropriation for. The first one is the General Fund, and we're anticipating approximately 3.2 million in lost revenue. So as we had discussed before early on, if you recall, when we were talking about refunding the litigation bands, we had also talked about what the administration was doing to try to meet that potential revenue shortfall. Because there are so many uncertainties, we did exceed what we're initially anticipating in lost revenue. And also, some of that was just, you know, without a lot of programming that was canceled and going on, some of it was just going to be reduced anyway. So we did identify 4.5 million in appropriation reductions. So part of this will be to reduce general fund appropriations by $4.5 million. The next part deals specifically with the Parks and Recreation Fund. As we all know, they were hit hardest by the virus as far as their programming and activities. To date, there's realized losses of about 379,000 for the pools not operating, camps not operating as originally intended, and then also the senior center being closed. So we identified 695,000 in appropriation reductions. So that will be part of this request is to reduce appropriations for the Parks and Recreation Fund in the amount of $695,000. Finally, the CARES Act. So this is what we've been working on for quite, quite some times over the last few weeks. So we did receive about $1.1 million. So the first thing that we did was analyze what had been spent to date and what was allowed to be reimbursed under the CARES Act. I don't know how many of you know. I know Karen probably knows, but the, the guidance is vague and broad. I believe it was done that way to give some flexibility. So there's basically three requirements that have to be met. The expenditure was necessary due to the public health emergency with respect to coronavirus disease. The expenditures were not accounted for in the most recent budget. As of March 27, 2020, the expenditures were incurred from March 1 through December 31. So kind of want to go back to that second point where they discuss the expenditures were not accounted for in the most recent, recently approved budget. What they mean there is is not intended. So the original appropriations did not intend to use those dollars to deal with the public health emergency. So since we were not using the appropriations as intended, that's considered not accounted for in the most recent budget. There is also an express prohibition that you could not use any of this money for revenue replacement. So we had to be very careful when we were looking at using these funds that we were not in any way, shape, or form using it as revenue replacement. And to Karen's point earlier, yes, we do have to return all unspent funds. Unfortunately, earlier than December 31, the state is requiring it by December 28. With the holiday and everything else, we will look at doing an analysis after the accounts payable on December 18 and return the funding that is unspent that following week, just to make sure that we're meeting the deadline, and we have time to make sure that we've spent as much as we can. So what is in the appropriation request? So the first thing we did, again, was look at what can we reimburse ourselves for that we've already spent to date. So it does allow for recoupment for paying employees' emergency paid sick leave. That was under an extended FMLA leave for Families First and the Coronavirus Response Act. So we looked at what we paid to date to employees for emergency paid sick leave. We also had employees that could not report due to the public health emergency. They were on call, and those employees were kind of reporting to areas on a rotating basis, but they couldn't actually perform their job duties while being remote. So we were able to recoup the cost for those employees while they were unable to report and unable to perform their job duties while staying at home. And then we looked at all contract services, materials, and supplies that were directly related to dealing with the public health emergency. And then we looked at a final salary and benefit piece, which was employees who were redirected. So they were no longer doing activities that were in alignment with their job responsibilities. They were redirected to do or or work with things directly with the COVID-19 public health emergency. So in total, we identified $486,000 that we could reimburse the General Fund mainly. There's a couple other funds that are receiving a little bit of reimbursement, but the majority of the $486,000 will be reimbursing the General Fund. We then looked at what are we going to need through December 18 for the rest of the year. So we looked at what the contract services, materials, and supplies. Each department went in and put in what they felt they would need through the end of the year. There's also a requirement that we cannot stockpile. So it has to be items that could reasonably be used by the end of the year. Yes, there might be a small inventory, but we could not use the funds for what we anticipate is going to happen in 2021. It's all intended to be used in 2020. We also looked at what we might have in future emergency paid sick leave to employees related to the virus. And then there was also a stipulation in there that states that as an employer, you could recoup unemployment cost. So our unemployment costs have increased significantly and will continue to. A lot of that is based on a look back approach that's in the higher revised code. So we're actually paying unemployment costs for some employees that haven't been here this year. They were employed the previous year, so we're responsible for a portion of their unemployment costs. So we also have that amount that we were planning to use the funds for. That roughly came to 235,000, which left us with about 380,000 that we could then apply to assistance for small businesses and residents. Because of the requirement that we can't use it for revenue replacement, when it comes to residents, the plan is to use it for costs that will help keep them in their homes, so mortgage and rental assistance. And then for small businesses, it's how they were impacted by closure or dealing with the response itself. So we are going to be working with Insight Advisory. That's Jennifer Six's company. They're going to help us administer it since we don't have the manpower to do it. So they're going to be helping with the application process, accepting them, analyzing them, awarding, and then helping with the subrecipitant monitoring that goes along with the with the federal award. So that's what I have for my action item. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So that, okay, anybody have questions?
Nancy, this is Mike.
I want, go ahead, Mike.
Okay, Michael, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Joanne. It's a lot of good information there. I guess, and it's good to see this kind of in practice, because thus far, everything that I've seen has more or less been, I guess, in theory, and as I'm sure we're all used to, there's a lot of information and misinformation that's just kind of floating out there with, you know, news headlines, and everybody trying to be the first to the story. So it's nice to see this in practice. Conceptually, the way I understand the problem is that cities, municipalities across the country are, they're facing sort of a, it's a double edged sword, or it's a one-two punch, whichever way you want to phrase it, of reduced revenue, of which I'm seeing a figure here of 3.2 million in your report. And then on the other side of the ledger are rising costs. The, I just want to make sure that I completely understand here that the CARES Act, this 1.1 million that has been, I guess, allocated to the city, is not meant to fill holes in that 3.2 million, but it is intended to offset the other side of the ledger, which are the costs. ledger, which are the costs. So, and I, and I think that's pretty clear. With that being said, the total that you've, you've identified that the city could use is, is, is what exactly? I heard two figures and I apologize, I didn't write them down.
No problem. So the amount, uh, that we're going to be reimbursed, uh, is 486,000. And then we have another 235,000 anticipated to be spent through the end of the year. So there'll be 721,000, uh, for the city.
So is a, okay, thank you. So is a fair way to look at this? We can, we can net those two out and compare that to the budget that we passed? Or is that maybe too rudimentary? I guess I'm just trying to figure out like, what is sort of the net overall damage of this, this pandemic to the city's finances?
Oh, no, no yet. Um, that's, that's part of the problem is there's so many uncertainties and I, I honestly cannot answer what the, the end result will be. That's, that's part of why in the update items, um, you saw the emergency reserve still listed.
Sure.
If this should continue, if there should be another, um, outbreak, if should they, if they should want to close things down again, um, you know, there's just, there's just so much that could happen, um, until there's a vaccine, um, that it's, it's, it's too hard to tell. So we're just trying, what we're trying to do is just trying to be prepared, um, so that we could face whatever comes our way as it, as it comes.
Is it fair to say, I guess maybe if I'll rephrase the question, that currently or year to date or estimated year to date, the net impact is the, the 3.2 less 721,000, which comes down to approximately 2.5 million? That?
I would say that's fair.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That, that's adequate for me. I appreciate it. Sorry to be, uh, so confusing with that.
No problem.
Karen, did you have a question?
Yeah, actually, actually I do because there's more money still at the state of Ohio that they're holding on to and it's a, a rather, a large amount is, because they, they got originally 1.2 billion and they, uh, they're putting out 350 million. So there's, there's a group, there's about, there's quite a bit of money that still can go out, as I understand it. And I hope I'm not being correct as I understand it, but.
Yeah, that is correct.
Yeah, okay. So there, there's, there's potential more, potentially more money that will become available, uh, but I don't exactly know when. And, uh, there's those dateline, those dates are pretty interesting too. And there, the grants that we can, we would give to people as well as businesses, um, how will that work? But I, I don't recall if they're, if they're, if they're a grant, they, they do not get paid back. So that money, that money actually does need to be used for, to help people in our community.
Correct. It will be a grant program, so there's no expectation for repayment.
Yeah. So that, that, and that could be a very positive for those people that are in need in our community. Uh, we figured those out. That's another thing.
So how?
Thank you.
How will the, how will the, the businesses or the residents know that we have this money available? How we?
So that's what we're going to be working on. We can't do anything with it until appropriations are passed, uh, which is why we have waiver on this. So Insight has been working on an application process and guidelines and we've been working closely together to make sure that we are, are meeting all the requirements under the uniform guidance, uh, for the Single Audit Act. Um, so we have some stuff roughed out, um, you know, based on what council's will was to offer these programs. Um, it appears, um, that everybody thinks it's a good idea. So we'll continue marching forward with that. The goal is to have everything ironed out, um, next week and then immediately start marketing. And that's what we'll use the marketing and communications department for. Uh, so that's kind of our, our plan is to get the, get working on the process so that on the 17th, when these appropriations are approved, we could launch.
And, and I, I could add Nancy, in terms of how we're going to share the information with the community, so, uh, actually kind of twofold number. First of all, I think, um, Councilman Larick earlier, uh, in the regular council meeting referenced that there's a program that CIC is getting ready to launch, um, with a, a, a small pot of funds that will help to get businesses started down this path. So we have actually a flyer that will be going out to that. Once those funds are dis, are dispersed and distributed and the CARES Act program that we'll be able to offer goes into place, we'll send out another communication. We have a constant contact listing, uh, with businesses. Everything will go out that way. Well, um, we'll be doing a press release to go out to the newspaper, um, in terms of the, the residents as well. Um, there will be communications through GRIN, um, and their client base to, to help with that. So we have, uh, plus Facebook and, and website things that we typically will reach out to. So we have a, a whole plan in place for how we'll be sharing that information throughout the community.
Is, is there any thought to like percentages to businesses and percentages to residents? Or is, is it just, we don't know that yet or?
I can't speak. Go ahead, Jen.
Yep. I would say what we're going to do is we're going to put a high-end cap on both crap, on both programs is what we discussed, so that, that way, um, we're not overly funding any one party or any one area. Um, and knowing that your small businesses probably have more of a, of a need than maybe a resident, but maybe not. You know, a lot of these residents may have been out of jobs for a long time, um, and to have that, those mortgage and rental payments backing up. So we know that we have 380,000, um, and we're, our plan is not necessarily to break it up with X amount goes to businesses and X amount goes to residents, but rather put a cap on how much any one, uh, recipient can request. So like a cap of up to 5,000 for residential and maybe a cap of up to 10,000 for businesses. But that's something that we'll kind of iron out next week with the mayor, um, and through discussion with the rest of the administration to make sure that we're, we're setting those at an appropriate level.
Mrs. McGregor, can I comment or ask a question about that?
Michael.
Yeah, so this is Mike. Uh, is there, Joanne, I know you do a, a lot of work with various other, um, you know, professional guilds and things like that, whether it's ICMA or GFOA. Has there been any discussion about best practices surrounding this? I mean, while I, I think it's, it, it sounds great, right? That there's, there's money out there to help people. I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure that it's distributed in a, in a fair, uh, manner that, you know, I guess can withstand scrutiny.
Yep. So we've been working with OBM mainly, um, and they've been able to provide us with some examples of what other municipalities are doing as far as these grants. Uh, we got that information last week from OBM and then I shared it with Insight so we could look at those other programs and make sure that, you know, if there's something in there that looks like we want to incorporate it or, you know, maybe something we didn't think of. So yeah, we're, we're trying to just grasp as much information as we can. The problem is there's not a lot out there and a lot of times it's hard to find. So that's why we're really relying on OBM. They have a, a grants reporting, uh, website. Um, they also have a lot of resources out there.
Okay. I guess a key takeaway for the public, this isn't necessarily being done in a vacuum, correct? I mean, there, there's a handful of experts or a decent number of experts that are weighing in on this?
Correct.
Thank you.
And, and, and actually there's been a, a lot of time, and Joanne said earlier that, you know, that the guidance that have been issued on this are, are vague and broad. Um, and, and it's, it's been somewhat challenging to really crap, get your arms around what is and what is not allowed. Lots of webinars taking place, Joanne, uh, Joanne's been on many, I've been on some, uh, you know, just trying to understand and, and, and they've been wonderful about receiving a lot of questions from people. Um, so Joanne really has been working hand in hand with OBM, uh, to try to make sure that we're following the, the best practices. And then I don't know if Jen Six is still on the line, um, since we'll be working with her company in terms of managing this, the experience that they have in doing something like this. Jen, if you're still on, are you able to speak to that for just a minute?
Yes, I'm here. Mayor, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman McGregor, uh, thank you for allowing me the, the time to speak. This reminds me a little bit of opportunity zones. And if council recalls in 2017, when legislation was passed, opportunity zones were like the Wild West and people scrambled to get projects in, not really even knowing how they were going to be funded or what it even meant. This is not quite as nebulous as that, but one of the things I can assure you in assisting the city with its compliance efforts, uh, that we are going to do everything we can to make sure that we keep the city in compliance. So these programs are going to be very, they're going to be somewhat generic, but what we want to make sure is that we reach out to all the businesses. We have a very comprehensive business list. And to what Mayor said, you know, if we have to print flyers and walk door to door, it's really in our best interest to make sure that we have all this encumbered by October. On the residential side, we know that we have some, some residents that have been hit. And, and the great thing about the opportunity to support these residents is we can help them pay their back mortgages. We're not going to be able to help them pay their taxes or utilities, but we can help them with rent if they're renters and we can help them with mortgage if they own their own home. And there is not an LMI requirement for this, so we really will be able to reach out to everybody in the community and, um, look forward to getting started. So we are, we are ready to go. We have all of the documentation, um, in place and like, uh, Joanne said, we will be capping this so that we can make sure that we spread it out to as many people and businesses as we can.
I don't want to be ignorant, but wasn't LM, LM, LLMI or what?
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, low to moderate, yeah, low to moderate income. Low to moderate income. There are, there are a substantial amount of federal programs that require, uh, a mandatory percentage, uh, that meet low to moderate income requirements. In this case, uh, this program does not.
Okay. The only question I have is how, how do you, if you have more, more people apply than, than we have funds for, how do we determine who gets the funding?
Ms. Councilwoman, that, that will be on a first come, first served basis and, uh, as soon as the funds are expended, we will shut the program down.
Yeah. This is Mike. Mrs. McGregor.
Yes.
Can we just be mindful of notifying everybody kind of at the same time? I don't know if this is perhaps something that's already been thought about maybe, but just for the, just for the good of the order here, you know? I know mailings can be costly at times, but if everybody gets it in the mailbox, you know, within, you know, on the same day or plus or minus a day or two, um, I just, that, that, I, I think what we're kind of speaking towards is, again, while this is in concept, it's a good thing, we just want to make sure that it's, it's fairly applied to everybody and that, that someone isn't disadvantaged or, or feels like they've been slighted here. That's all.
If we could, if we could time it, we have a, a press release that we share with This Week News and we can coordinate with them when it goes out. Um, and then if it hits that website, email goes out all, and we, we coordinate that all to go out at the same time. Um, you know, I mean, there's only so much that we can do short of knocking door to door, but we can coordinate all of those, uh, media avenues so that it all falls within the same period of time. At least do the best we can.
I guess I see somebody there that's really needy, not having internet, not getting the newspaper, not having, you know, access to different, different.
And that would be, that would be where GRIN, I think, would help with that. Um, and actually, I have a call tomorrow with the Gehanna Ministerial Association and there might be a way even within their, their church communities to get news to people. Um, that way I was going to talk to them about that too. Um, so, I mean, there, there's, it's, it's really going to be, and honestly, quite frankly, it's all of you. Uh, you know, we're going to need as many people as we can to help just get the information out once we're ready to launch this, um, so that people know. And, and word of mouth is always the best way and, and Gehanna, one of the fastest ways, I think.
This, and this will be for Gehanna, Gehanna residents only, not?
Correct.
Okay. Gehanna residents, okay. All right.
Yeah, Mrs. McGregor, to, to Mr. Schnitzer's, uh, request about mailing, if we had the money, the first class mail drop to everybody in the city, that would be ideal. We actually have considered that and thought about it. Sounds like someone's sloshing through a pond. Sorry. Um, if we, if we had the funding, uh, to, to do a first class mailing, I think that we would absolutely consider that. That is going to be cost prohibitive. That's what I mentioned, that if we, if we need to take a half day and I pull some staff members and we do a door drop, so to speak, uh, for businesses, I'm happy to do that. Uh, but also on the residential side, listen, listen, if we need to print some flyers and put them at Kroger and, and work a deal that they put a flyer, you know, in all the bags that's specific to residential dwellings, I mean, we're, we're willing to really do whatever we can because I'll tell you, and I think Joanne will agree, and, and so will the mayor, that the more successful we can be with this round of funding, should heels come out with something else, if we can prove that this has been successful, we are more likely to get funding in the future if we can prove that we've done a really good job this round.
I agree.
The last thing you want to have to do is to send any money back. If, if we're going to get it, wouldn't want to use it all so that we, we prove we need more in the future.
Okay. So the ordinance, um, does it need waiver and emergency or just waiver of second?
No, appropriations don't have, um, emergency. It just needs to be waived. They don't have the 30-day wait.
Okay, okay.
Appropriations.
I was just, okay. So, um, is everyone all right with the waiver?
Yes. Yeah, I think it's necessary in this case, right?
Okay. So this will be on the next council meeting for, um, do we need to have this for on regular agenda probably?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Typically waiver and works that we do, yes.
Okay, so will this be on regular agenda? Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments on that, I guess we should ask?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, next one, uh, Mr. Blackford, do you have anything on the fence code?
Save the best for last.
I feel honored. Thank you all for saving the best for last. Um, we were provided some red line, uh, changes. It was to address, uh, two of the areas that we had previously talked about, which was the, uh, height of posts and finials and similar, um, uh, features there that was, uh, requested that we allow it to exceed the maximum fence height. And then it was also, uh, new language to address, um, what the code currently says, which is good side of a fence. That is, you know, probably not good language. That's pretty subjective. Um, so we have, uh, proposed revisions to that, to define that, make that a little bit more defensible and clear for our customers. Uh, happy to have any feedback related to that. Please know that we are still looking at some of the more complicated fence related issues and hopefully we'll have updates forthcoming.
Um, any questions or comments?
So at this point, this is still not, we're not looking at doing anything with this yet, right?
Not completed. It was just to provide a, my apologies, uh, this is just to provide a progress update on what we've done thus far.
Perfect. Thank you.
I, I read the part, and I did this, when I brought it up just now, I do have the red lines. I didn't have it earlier when I looked at this, so I don't know what happened, but, um, the, I, I, it is interesting about the, um, the, the definition for the good side of the fence. Um, we had a fence one time where we alternated the, the slats on opposite sides of the stringers. And so, um, it was the same both sides and I, we wondered if that would be legal under this, but I see that it would be because it's, it would be the same on both sides. So I was just curious about that. That's a good way to word that, in my opinion, so.
Thank you. That was borrowed language from a few other codes. Um, you know, that's a tricky one to kind of address and, um, from my, uh, recent experience dealing with, uh, fence permits, that is a, a changing sort of, there's a lot of changes to fences and getting creative in that. And so I think that language allows us to, um, handle, at least for right now, you know, the types of fences that we're seeing, um, but ensuring that basically the quality side is, is facing the, the neighbors.
And, and there is, is there something in here about the, I, I think I read it about maintain the fence so that when the posts fail, that the people have to repair the fence if it's listing or you can tell, there's a lot of fences that need some repair around town.
Um, I believe that's existing language. I don't think, we haven't changed that with the, uh, this language or any of the, the past language.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any other questions about that fence code?
Can I say something?
Sure.
I appreciate you guys accepting my word that I would help move the stuff along with the fences and move forward in other areas. I have earned the name of the taskmaster now because I have been trying to drive this forward. I, I do appreciate you guys giving me the leeway, saying that, you know, trust me to, to help get this stuff through. Unfortunately, Jamie, you have the most difficult piece of the puzzle, and we are working on that, trying to figure out how we can talk about trespass on other people's properties. That's, that's a little bit more difficult, but we will, we are working on that too. So, so thanks for your consideration, guys.
Any other comments about the fence at this point?
Not at this time, thank you.
Okay, so then we are at the end of our agenda. So shall we adjourn?
Yes, so moved.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.